Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chairman Telba is out tonight, so I'll be chairing this looks like a very light agenda meeting. In which the agenda consists of old new business. And I think maybe we could start with Debbie, she's we've got a few things here.
Oh, yeah. Um, so I spoke to um Logical Communication Services today. And basically what they do is they send out our kilowatt hours to a whole bunch of different suppliers. And they kind of bid on who gets the lowest rate. And um it we can do a twelve month, a twenty four month, or a thirty six month contract with them. And if we do, for instance, the thirty six month, um we could save forty four percent of our electric bill, so about twenty four thousand five hundred dollars over the course of the three years. Um and that was for all the streetlights. And then the other one, we could save twenty seven thousand two hundred and eighty one dollars over the course of three years. Um for all the town buildings. So, um if you guys think you should do that. And it's just the supply, like everybody, you can do it through the house or or anything, so.
So would would bills still come through Eversource?
Everything's still through Eversource, you just sign a contract and and Eversource doesn't charge you their twenty two and a half cents. They charge you whatever that rate is for the supplier. I don't know how it works, but it's been going on for years. A lot of people to their homes have done this, but.
Uh one point that um you have to take into consideration with it, that's just the cost of the kilowatt hours.
Correct.
Uh for the electricity. It does not include the meter the set fee for the meter.
Correct.
At each location. It does not include the um recovery charges.
Right.
And it does not include the um delivery charge.
Correct. But we can pay an extra twenty seven thousand dollars, well between the two of them over fifty thousand dollars over the course of three years. Well, we cannot pay fifty thousand over those three years.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know what I mean? It's it's totally just for the supply.
Oh, I agree, I agree, it it I don't want anybody to think that this is, you know, a magic thing that's going to take care of
No, I think.
seventy percent of the uh of the electric bill because it does.
No, no, it's this is how much you could save, so they're gonna get the supplier cost down to if over the three or if you do the three year one to point one two five seven five per kilowatt hour.
Mm-hmm.
And right now Eversource is charging point two two five five six, I think.
Something like that, it it was supposed to come down a half a penny or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um with the next bill.
Right. So monthly we'd save about seven fifty on that one and six eighty on that per month. So.
Six hundred and eighty, yeah, so we're talking about uh eight thousand dollars a year.
Well, fifty thousand dollars for three years.
Yeah, that's what this one. This one here, um eighty six hundred for the streetlights.
Yeah.
If you went if we went with one year, the thing I'm wondering. Uh I don't know um how this company works, but it seems to me like I remember
If the price goes down.
they opened this up for private um suppliers.
Yeah.
But that was just a delivery charge.
Yeah, it's the supplier.
And that uh twenty two but the actual, I don't remember how it's broken down.
Well, the twenty two right now is for the price of um of the generation of the electricity.
It's the supply.
Yeah.
Or the supplier of the electricity.
It's the supplier per kilowatt hour.
And then there's a delivery charge.
Which is that's separate.
Then there's that's separate.
I thought that's what these companies were allowed to do is.
No.
The supplier, which technically kinda is the delivery, I guess.
Well, it's I think it's broken out, is it not?
No, it is broken out on the um Eversource bill.
Right.
But what happens is they're using the Eversource lines uh to deliver everything. All they're doing is generating the electricity. Through solar panels, through whatever means that they have.
This company actually generates its own electricity?
I don't think so.
I've never heard of that.
Yeah, if if you look, um Wilton was running a um a thing of putting up uh some panels up there, which I think they've decided to go ahead and do. And they're making a co-op there to sell the electricity to their residents.
That's a whole different thing.
I understand that. But the generation of the electricity there is still cheaper than it would be from Eversource.
Correct. Yeah. But so.
I'm just looking at what their website says.
I would like to see, I'm I'm not sure, so if we signed a three year contract to get the best rate, what if the rate goes down? Do we still do we still have to pay the higher rate?
That's. Yeah, and that's where I think, so this is just an opening to see if we wanna
Correct, yeah.
chase this thing or not.
This is just how much we could save.
Yeah, there's not, there's nothing here that's contract or anything like that, yes.
Right, so no, nope. So I'll ask them, I can call them tomorrow. What happens if the rate comes down?
This is not a local company, this is a global company.
I believe that.
I saw on here it says City of Berlin, and I thought, oh, maybe it's Berlin. Oh, that's Germany.
Oh.
And Paris.
So so there um this company is um they they put it out to bid basically to all of those suppliers. And then those suppliers send them back their what their best rate would be based on your kilowatt hour usage.
Yeah.
And then he he picked the lowest, you know, to put in his proposal. But, I mean, to say that that might not be.
So that means if he's got a supplier from, let's say, where the generation's happening up on Saint Lawrence Seaway, um then it'd be hydroelectric electricity from up there where, you know, then, you know, that could end up being a lot cheaper than what they're producing using natural gas locally.
So.
Interesting.
Yeah, so.
Would like would like definitely like more details to see how this looks.
Okay.
You know, over the year and how our electric bill would look. Because, yeah, this is a big company, but I remember when all these small companies came out and then some of them had in fine print its variable
Yeah, like direct energy and.
and this was actually minimum cost and then people's bills and so.
Yeah. Uh right, yeah, so he said the these are locked in prices for whatever term we choose. So I'm guessing if the rate goes down, as would stay what it is.
So I would, yeah, I would imagine some of it may be solar power also.
Mm-hmm.
Um be I'm sorry, because that's solar when when generated power.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, who knows?
Whoever the supplier is, however, it gets there.
Yeah.
But what do we care?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at.
We're gonna save fifty thousand dollars over three years.
We're looking at almost half the price.
Right.
For a portion of our electric bill, wouldn't be the whole thing, but.
Yeah. Right, yeah. But that's the expensive part, is the kilowatt hours. The rest of it's not horrible, I mean, it's bad, but.
Well.
Not horrible.
This is this is like.
I would advise you that you figure out, you know, right now the total cost of uh the electricity per kilowatt hour when you if you look at the total on the bill versus um the amount of kilowatt hours that you put in there. I just looked at it and ran that and it came out to about thirty five cents per kilowatt hour total.
For the whole bill?
For the whole bill.
Yeah, well, the this doesn't take into account the whole bill, this only takes into account.
So. I understand that.
The supply.
So but add that whole bill, twenty two and a half cents is what they're charging for the supplier.
Supplyor.
So that's two thirds.
Mm-hmm.
Now from twenty two down to twelve and a half is um almost half.
Right. But.
So that means that you're down to, you know, one third, your your bill would probably drop about one third.
Yeah. So what questions do we need to ask him other than if the rate goes down, does this this stay the same?
A sample of the contract be reviewed?
Yeah, what would it be?
Okay.
Yeah, more specific, so.
Yeah, 'cause you probably want that reviewed by either an insurance company or um um or a legal team.
Okay.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Okay, I can get that tomorrow.
Support, you know, bring that cost down.
Yep. Yeah.
Especially 'cause it
Uh-huh. Yeah.
this last year was a painful one.
Kilo, yep. Oops, I'm gonna need that, just okay. Okay. So that's that. Um what else do we have? Oh, the um Oh, um the weather, I get the emails like Peter does, you know, for what's going on. Um it's supposed to be wind chill of minus forty nine degrees on Saturday. And some people were talking about possibly closing the transfer station for the day 'cause it's like a wind tunnel up there to begin with when even when it's not windy. So I didn't know if it's kind of a health hazard.
That probably would, yeah, that'd be a smart move.
You think?
I mean, if it's gonna be that cold, you could put your garbage out in a can outside.
Wait a week.
And it's not gonna melt.
And we wouldn't uh.
Is Sunday supposed to be warmer? Because you could put a sign on the gate saying if Sunday is warm, uh the normal temperature, you could put a sign on the gate saying we'll be open Sunday instead of Saturday.
On the website or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's gonna be warmer, you'd have to see that if it's feasible.
I mean, I don't think people can wait a week.
I would think in the winter you should you should be able to, 'cause you know, if it if it stays frozen, it's not going to.
Yeah. I mean, the rest of the week isn't supposed to be that cold, it's supposed to be in the forties next week.
Well, the Fri- Friday night is almost twenty below.
But. But. Yeah, and Saturday is supposed to be wind chill minus forty nine, so. I don't know, I'm just thinking of people working there.
Is this absolutely.
Having to stand out there and press the button on the thing and take money.
Yeah.
It's definitely a wind tunnel down there.
Yeah, there's no key.
And I I yeah, when I was working down there a couple of weeks ago.
A hundred percent. The wind is up because of the old dump where there's no trees, the wind is passed through there.
Yep.
Agreed.
Yep.
Do you wanna put something that says it's closed or do you wanna?
We're still deciding, I guess, we're waiting to see since November.
We're wait we're waiting for a motion to, I like
Close.
to close the um transfer station for Saturday. Alright, I will make a motion to close the transfer station for Saturday.
Uh second.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so on the website, transfer station will be closed this Saturday due to extreme weather conditions.
It's seriously.
We don't want anyone getting frostbite. Okay. Thank you, Sue. Um.
Try to get that out tonight so people can plan ahead.
Perfect. Awesome, um the other option is if they wanted to, they can always go to Reds um in Jaffrey.
Mm-hmm.
And it's it's actually MDS.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so they don't have to go to our transfer station every Saturday. If they wanted to go during the week, they can go up to Reds and they don't need a sticker or a special bags or anything like that.
They just pay for it.
Just go, it's like sixteen cents a pound.
They do it by weight, by order.
Oh, okay. To get rid of stuff, you adapt it, yeah. Yep. So, and that's a topic for another day. Um, yeah, and then that, I guess the Green Center had a meeting. And they suggested, I guess, there's an anonymous donor who's been paying to empty their dumpster, which is about twelve hundred bucks a year. And um they have money in their revolving account and they wanna use that. Not that the selectmen have any jurisdiction over that, but they just wanted to put it out there. So I told Karleen, go ahead and do that, that's it's their account.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, good for people to know that they're getting to pay for the dumpster now.
Yeah. Right.
Well.
Yeah, so all all donations are gracefully accepted.
Hmm.
Okay. And just a reminder, the deliberative session is February seventh at seven P M at the high school. And the school deliberative is the following night on the eighth at six P M. And everything has been posted, done through all the reports can printed and whatever through the D R A for the um deliberative. Um they're posted on the website, in the lobby, at the post office. I think I have to bring one up to the school too.
You have to do one at the school?
I think so. Remind, I'll have to remember to do that tomorrow.
Yeah, I did it last year, probably.
Oh, alright. You can take a ride to that tomorrow if you feel like it.
Oh.
Oh, I mean, I can do it, I would just.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, yeah, you go in the front.
Doesn't matter. In the front lobby and post it there, okay.
Yeah, I'll just put it on the wall.
You ready for the deliberative?
Oh, yeah. I'm up I'm ready for the meeting um over at the transfer station before the deliberative too.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be interesting.
No, it's not at the transfer station.
Well, that's that's not the invitation under red, but it's here.
We're happy to hear it.
No.
A chair, yeah.
It said for the transfer station and it said location here.
Okay.
A chair, you're right.
To my knowledge, that's what it was.
Okay.
No, you're
I just wanna make sure it's clear.
We're going to discuss, yeah, the.
This is, uh, I guess since you bring it up, uh, we're looking at doing some timber harvesting. On the land that we own there.
Yep. Okay. So that's on two seven. So everyone, I think, has responded so far that they're gonna be there, so I'll post it if you three are all gonna be there. I mean, it's not really it's it's not really a selectmen's meeting.
It'll be here four o'clock.
But if you wanna comment as a selectman, I guess.
Yeah. Well, who is the meeting, when?
I'd have to post it. Um Dan Reed from the state, Phil Thayer, Kenny Letman, Becky Doyle, Bob Boynton. And you you guys.
Peter.
And Peter, yes. Yeah. An eclectic group of people.
Wouldn't wanna miss that.
Right? Fun never ends. Yeah, so that's at four, I don't know if we're gonna have a regular meeting at five and then go over to the school, like a quick meeting.
Yeah, till the end of the session, yeah.
So we'll we'll have to figure that out. Alright, you got anything, Jason?
You're done?
I'm done.
Alright, thank you, I think we had a few things, maybe.
Um. What was it that uh host me talk about? The uh, oh, our is our our um uh emergency services department
Oh, yeah.
um prepared for this cold weather.
Uh, that's a good question.
I think typically on one day cold snap, there's probably not much preparation being made.
Yeah, that's yeah. Yeah, oh, I mean, the only problem would be if people lose power, I would think.
Yeah, it does. Mm-hmm. Again. I've got to know if.
But but I don't think the cold is gonna cause the power to blow.
Yeah, I.
It's it's only that wet, heavy, windy, snow stuff.
Yeah, I.
Although, if it's gonna be really windy, forty mile an hour winds could knock a branch down.
So they're.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, this is supposed to be like zero degrees and then a forty mile an hour wind or some crazy thing.
If people do lose power, is there supposed to?
So we have, um Sean had talked to the school and we can use that as like a warming station.
Mm-hmm.
Um but I don't know if that was just for that one storm that we had, well, that
That was hot like.
what the one-two punch, I think that may just have been for that.
Yeah.
So there is an idea.
Um but there is an idea, I'll send out an email. And uh see what the thing is and then we can post it on the website and if people call t- call two one one if they have phone service.
With with. Yeah, right.
They can find out where the shelter, where the shelters.
Can they call two one one on a cell phone?
I don't, I think so, you can call nine one one and four one one.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I don't know.
So where does two one one take you?
Um so two one one is this, I think the state website, so you can, it'll tell you where warming stations are, water stations,
The state.
that type of thing, shelters. But I will I will send that email out tomorrow and see what I get for a response and I'll let you know and then.
I can add it on to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I did, I was at the meeting, well, part of the meeting that they had.
The one I missed?
What was it? Yeah.
Yeah, so it went to Tuesday, I think it was Wednesday.
It was uh. Yeah, it was Wednesday or something, and I made it for the last part of it.
Thursday, so.
It sounded to me like that was just arrangements for this weekend, it wasn't.
A one. Particular.
Anytime you want, come on over, that wasn't really the tone we had uh.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, we'd have to communicate.
Yeah, and I think the E M D director would.
So we'll we'll figure that. Initiate that.
They would have to initiate, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right.
And typically, from what I gather, and I haven't been involved in this sort of thing ever, so it was interesting to see
Right.
the team here.
Yeah.
Typically, it's gonna be the fire department and highway department are gonna start getting calls, yeah.
And police, yeah. Yeah, we all met over at S V A S, 'cause that was the only place that had warm in power on a Tues- Tuesday?
What we do. Oh. Oh, yeah.
Monday, I think it was Monday. I don't remember, but yeah.
But there was, I think it would be good, and you talked that there it's gonna be a follow-up meeting.
Yes, I think it's gonna be tomorrow at three.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what it looked like, the emails were going back and forth, it's I was coming out here.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it's tomorrow by three.
And they're gonna meet here?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if I'll be able to attend, but it is.
What time tomorrow?
Three o'clock.
Three. For the follow-up, for the after, things that worked, things that didn't work, things that need improvement on what, on all the emergency things.
Okay, then I'll reserve my comments of what I thought was going on until that meeting and bring it up then.
Okay.
Alright.
Cool.
Yeah, and the other thing I heard there was there's a generator shortage in town.
Yeah.
Possibly only one generator needed, but there was, I think all three would like permanent generators
Right.
for D B W, fire.
Yeah.
Town office.
Have they had a police department?
And the town office.
Yeah, okay, so then that's four.
Yeah. So the.
Yeah, all the work I lost last Monday.
Right, so the problem is you have to keep filling up the gas, filling up the gas, and like for the police, that's a problem. You know, 'cause they have to keep leaving, going to get gas, 'cause it only lasts so long up there, and if their power goes down, it lose the they lose their communications, it could it fried one of the hard drives or something, some kind of drive because it went out again and then came back on again. So they need more of a dependable, I don't know if they can do propane, so you're not gonna run out.
Maybe that seems like a battery backup would be nice so that they can shut it down.
Yeah, I thought they had a battery backup, but it still shuts down and kicks on, kicks on, I don't know.
And it shouldn't. Right, but the battery backup is supposed to maintain it until you can shut it down.
Uh battery backup. It isn't instantaneous, some battery backups actually have um a serial connection from the battery backup to a computer to bring it down properly.
Hmm.
Yeah.
That's the kind that should be here, especially for.
And that's the kind that should be on all of those, yes.
Right. Right. Right, for a fi- and then the fire department, um they can't open their doors to get the fire trucks out if they if their power goes out, so it's a whole thing, and then here, we couldn't do anything, the only thing that was on was the hall lights. None of the offices were on, none of the office lights, none of the computers, the server, the server went down.
And that's a generator. This is when the generator kicked in?
Yep, yep, and that, well, Peter had to come start the furnace, because all those things are run on electricity. So the generator doesn't work, 'cause they draw too much power for the generator to work, so he had to come turn the oil burner on.
The generator.
Um and so it basically does the oil burner and the lights in the hall. But nothing else was working, so we couldn't do anything. No internet, no power, no computers.
It wouldn't take too many watts to power computers.
Power some what?
To power up the computers, they take almost nothing.
Um that's true.
But then you're gonna have internet, 'cause we're all on that server, so if you don't have internet, you can't do any, you know.
Yeah.
But they, you know, one of the big problems with those um power um sources that they use on computers is that they're only good for maybe an hour, an hour and a half.
Yeah.
And then and then they're out.
Yeah.
They're really intended so you can safely shut them down.
So you can safely shut down, right.
Yeah. Right.
So we should look at those who want run to make it sure that it does shut everything down properly so that we don't run into uh lost information.
Hmm, so did we didn't run into that here, did we?
Which is, to my knowledge, no. And which is another good ca- uh good reason to do the cloud backup, is that that server fried when it came back up?
The cloud backup. Mm-hmm.
With these.
Yep.
To put it nicely, you know? Anything you did during that day or from the last, I mean, it's supposed to back up every night, but anything you did during the day is gonna be gone.
It's gonna be gone.
So, yeah, which is always fun.
Things we talk about.
I know.
And then it happens.
Yep, right.
But yeah, and typically it happens with everybody is that they talk about it, it happens, and then all of a sudden you realize that you should've done it six months ago when you were first.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Well, and that's the thing, if we're trying to be proactive versus reactive and put Band-Aids on things and, but it all costs money, so.
Right. That's right.
This is the thing.
Where do you draw the line?
And, yeah, you can be, life has a lot of things that you can be proactive about, and pretty soon you.
Right. Yeah, break break the bank.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
Generators run, what, like fifty thousand a piece?
Um so Peter got quotes um for, 'cause they're both three phase, the D P W and um fire station, they're both three phase power, so and for the generator itself, the transfer switch
Hmm.
and the whatever, ev- all-inclusive installed and everything, it was about forty seven thousand dollars each.
Capital reserve?
I mean. I mean, it could kind of go into communications for fire, but they, I don't know, they don't have a communications capital reserve yet. Um but, I mean, and that's, right, and that's the problem.
Yeah, we already come up with that kind of money. Hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You can buy, they're doing the portals now, but.
Should probably go into basically the same kind of reserve that you would use for um uh replacing the roof on, uh planning on replacing the roof after twenty, thirty years.
So building maintenance is what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that one's.
Pretty hefty.
It's got a lot of hands out for it.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So.
But isn't there a generator building too?
There is, mm.
Something.
Yeah, there's something down there, and Peter was saying something about it, but I think he said he could hook it up for up here, but it's not gonna, 'cause this is three phase also, I believe, he said.
Hmm.
So the only one that isn't is the P D.
I thought you had.
It could be, it could be three phase, but in that case, there would be a transformer to convert it down into a two-phase for.
Yeah, it would have to for all this.
Right, yeah.
I thought we had a.
So.
Or the rewired.
Back-up generator.
Then then maybe one, unless that's the one that ended up up the P D.
It depends on, yeah.
No, I mean a bigger one.
My god.
That kicks on automatically, no?
Oh.
Whenever I've gone into that building, I hear something beeping.
Oh, yeah, that's the fire alarm.
Oh, that's a fire alarm.
Yeah, that beeps up here too. It's not an alarm, it's a um.
A malfunction.
Yeah, so there's some kinda moisture somewhere on something that causes anytime that it really rains heavy or it's really humid, it sets it off.
Hmm.
And they're trying to trace it, but they can't find it.
Hmm.
So. So we deal with the French fries being done occasionally.
We talked about going cloud backup on the servers.
Yep.
And did we ever get a price on that or?
Uh yeah.
What was it?
Yeah, I think it was like sixty seven hundred a year or something like that. Um Mike has already switched over, which I didn't realize that.
I remember that, yeah.
But he didn't get the the big s- so the sixty seven hundred would be for us and his.
Hmm.
'Cause it it's it's separate but together.
Yeah.
On one package, so.
'Cause it's coming to the same customer, which is us.
Right, I guess, yeah. So, a year.
Or he took a smaller?
Yeah, yeah, a lower storage amount or something. Yep.
And that's in his budget?
Yeah.
And so if we were to put the town office into the town office budget, it would be less than sixty seven hundred.
Well, it's it's like a, yeah. We're, oh yeah, yeah, 'cause that includes his, so but I'm not sure what portion of that was P D and what portion of that, 'cause they need a lot more storage than we do.
Oh yeah.
So I don't know how much was which. I can dig out the quote. And I thought I put it in our budget.
Was it?
I thought I did. I'll have to look that up. It's not gonna be a single line item. It's all under that computer support thing.
Oh.
Is there, do we have an archive backup also right now for all the old paperwork from twenty, thirty years ago?
No.
Okay.
No, if this building were done, we'd be, we'd have nothing. Other than the hard drive that Jen takes home every night.
In minutes. Minutes of meetings.
No, we wouldn't have them.
That's a uh paper.
Oh, paper, yeah. If you had them on person.
Oh, let's say, well, she said if the building burnt out.
Oh, they're I'm saying if the building burnt down, we'd have nothing.
No, well, that's all fireproof paper.
In your dreams.
Did we get our old, remember they were gonna do the restoration on the old reports and stuff?
They weren't gonna do restoration, they would they were putting, yeah, so I have it on a flash drive.
Preservation, I think.
Yeah, I have it all on a fr- flash drive and they were I'm
Do we have them back in in our?
We don't have the physical books in our possession yet.
Hmm.
But we do need to email another of that. I haven't even looked at the flash drive yet. And they'll all be returned in like moisture-proof w- um containers.
Oh.
That's part of the price of doing all that.
What we.
Yeah.
You have anything else, though?
Um, nothing I can take up.
Alright, I had one follow-up item from the last time I was here. We had a resident come in, Dean Swanson.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we said we'd get back to him by the twenty fourteen.
Uh February February fourteenth.
Oh, it's February fourteen.
Yes, I was looking at that today, actually.
Ah.
Yep.
And really, what was it that he was looking for?
He wanted to get permission from us to cut down trees on a cart path.
Yeah.
Who belong who it belongs to somebody else.
Well, actually, this is what I think.
Thinks it belongs to somebody else because it's really terrible.
It's.
It's a discontinued road.
Right.
And I.
But his property doesn't touch it. From the way it looked on the map, but we.
It looked like it, uh the way it looked on the map looked like it was an easement anyway.
It is an easement.
To who?
To the people in, is it Salem? No.
Sweeney.
Sweeney, yeah, so they they had the easement to use it as a driveway.
Oh, okay.
But then it then it wraps around to the back of his property, but the part that comes from Davis Village, it didn't look like.
I did just thought.
Okay.
So I mean, we suggested he ask the neighbors if it they could he could use it for a cement truck for a day.
Okay, he said that that wasn't going to work.
Right.
That would.
So, yeah, we told them February fourteenth. Alright.
Uh the only other thing I had was uh another reminder of, this is the last week for candidates to sign up.
Oh, yes, by February third, thank you.
So this Friday.
So it's the regular business hours, Monday through Thursday this week, and then Friday the third, um the town clerk will be open from three to five for a candidate's sign up. If you don't get in, you can't be on the ballot.
Did you have anything you wanted to bring up in? Or Susan?
Yeah, I'm doing the annual report while I listen to you. Change scenery.
Alright, I think that will wrap up our public session.
Alright. Look at that.
Early.